The meeting will come to order. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Melody?
Here.
Mr. Weinecker?
Here.
Mrs. May?
And Mr. Valentine?
Here. A pledge of allegiance. Mr. Harris, will you get us started this evening, please? Approval of the regular minutes for the July 8th, 2021 meeting. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Melody. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weinecker?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. May. Questions or comments? I will say we've got a large number of folks signed up for public participation this evening. I will go through protocol on the front end of public participation so that everybody in the room is clear about how we handle that as well as on agenda versus off agenda time that we have speakers. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weinecker?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Dr. Marshals?
Good evening, members of the board, members of our community. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you where we are today with our safe return to in-person instruction protocols. This has definitely been a work in progress and it is definitely an emotional topic understandably for many of our parents. As the new superintendent, I've got to experience a lot of emotional and passionate emails. And one of the goals that I will share later in this meeting about my hundred day plan is the need to try to bring people together, the need to try to recalibrate how we communicate, to be able to disagree in a civil tone because one of the things, as I will share in a little bit in the hundred day plan review, is this is an absolutely amazing community with unlimited resources and people who love their school district and who love their kids and this being their home. And my hope is that during my tenure, we'll be able to bridge some of these gaps and find a way to communicate in a civil tone even when we don't agree with each other. On Thursday evening around seven o'clock, the Ohio Department of Health issued a new fact sheet related to school protocols and COVID. And this new, everything that I'm going to share from this fact sheet is available on the Ohio Department of Health website at O D H dot Ohio dot gov. And as part of those recommendations, there were five main bullet points, and these are taken word for word. They're recommending vaccination for all those who are eligible. They're strongly recommending the use of face masks and K-12, particularly for those who are not fully vaccinated. They're recommending maximum distance between people in classrooms, prompt identification, and providing appropriate care for those who exhibit symptoms, and practicing good hygiene, environmental practices, and environmental cleaning. This was released on the fifth. And as Dr. Vanderhoff said, young children who aren't eligible for vaccines and those who haven't been vaccinated should wear masks indoors, including in the school setting. And he said, for those who are 12 and up, vaccines remain our best protection against COVID-19. This was reiterated on Friday in a press conference with the governor, who talked about the need to get people vaccinated. For those who do not believe we have a shared goal, we have a shared goal, and it's to keep our children safely in our schools. And when we look at keeping kids safely in schools, our superintendent medical advisory committee was unanimous. The best way to keep kids in schools is by having students wear masks. But we also had a really great conversation with our docs, and we've had lots of conversations with our staff about what's the best way to reach this goal in an elite community and in a community that is very much representative of Ohio, a community that is very divided. And our divisions are also our diversities, which are also our strengths. What makes Dublin Dublin is the fact that not everyone's the same. We come from different political backgrounds, different social, different economic, different racial backgrounds. We're not always going to agree. So if we agree on the goal to keep our children safe, now we've got to talk about the how. And for the people who have been pretty direct with the board and I about not following the science, not believing the doctors, ignoring the recommendations, that's not our intention. In fact, our intention is to do exactly what the Ohio Department of Health is doing. We are strongly recommending that students wear masks when they come to school. How do we get there? Do we order a community where there's a lot of divisiveness and division? Or like I'm going to do tonight, we're going to lay out what we know as of today. And when I say what we know as of today, it really is as of today because things in this slide presentation changed at 2:00 p.m. after a conference call with Joe Mazzola, the commissioner of Franklin County Public Health, and Dr. Mashika Roberts from Columbus Public Health. We had a call today and some of this changed. It's probably going to change again before next Wednesday because our health commissioners are working through the processes. So when we look at how do we achieve this goal, these are the two things that we look at. Does it have to be in order or can we get there as a community? As my recommendation to the board, and we're going to have this discussion as a group at the end of the presentation, my recommendation to the board is that we strongly recommend students and staff wear masks in indoor settings. There's a bit of a change here from what we announced last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, we announced in grades K to six, after our call today and after the Ohio Department of Education, Department of Health, excuse me, released their guidance, and I'm going to show you the protocol tree and the decision tree in a moment, it's clear that there are benefits for our high school and middle school students who are already vaccinated to wear masks. So a change from Wednesday that took place today at about 2:15 is that we are now strongly recommending all students and staff wear masks when indoors. We know that masks provide a layer of protection that will help keep our students out of quarantine. We also know that parents will be able to let us know your wishes for whether you want your child to wear a mask or not in school, and we will assist our parents to make sure that those wishes are carried out. Dr. Mashika Roberts shared today, "The new science is clear. I wear a mask to protect me." At the beginning of this pandemic, we said, "I wore my mask for you." The research now shows, "I wear a mask to protect me." And when we look at the quarantine guidelines from the Ohio Department of Health, again, that were released on Thursday, those quarantine guidelines say two things that allow us as individuals to make the decisions for our families. Number one, if you're currently vaccinated, you are not subject to traditional quarantine. The Ohio Department of Health, if you are currently vaccinated, you are not subject to traditional quarantine. Furthermore, if you wear a mask to school, you will not be subject to traditional quarantine. So if your student is masked in a classroom and we do our job with our other mitigation and layered strategies, the masked student will not be quarantined. I've gotten dozens, if not hundreds, of emails saying that your absences are going to be off the chart, your absences are going to be off the chart. Folks, if you want your kids to stay in school and avoid being quarantined, you're going to send them to school wearing a mask. And you making that choice as a parent to send your kid to school wearing a mask is going to keep your child in school. Also, we will provide the free rapid tests. If we do have students who are quarantined, rather than it being 10 to 14 days, with a rapid test and no symptoms, we can get you back in seven days. So if you choose not to wear a mask and you are quarantined, if you're asymptomatic, we will give you the test that can get you back in seven days. Any week, seven days has two weekend days, you'd only miss a week of school. So as we look at what the decision-making tree is, and I know this is going to be really hard for those of you in the room to read, it's available on O D H's website. There's a decision-making tree that our nurses will use. The nurses' call with our health officials is tomorrow. If you meet all three of the main factors, if you are vaccinated, masked, and maintain social distance and you're a close contact, nothing happens. You're good. That's vaccinated, wearing a mask, and having social distance. If the answer to that is no on the chart, then we look at, okay, you're not vaccinated. What next? Were you constantly wearing, were you constantly wearing a mask? If the answer to an unvaccinated student is they're wearing a mask and they meet the other layered provisions, that student does not need to quarantine. This should be a huge relief to parents who are very concerned because you have the ability to control your child. You don't have to worry about what the other kids are doing. Your child wearing a mask gets to stay in school. And to our parents who have been resistant to masks, if your child's in school and they're not wearing a mask and they're a close contact, they're going to be home for at least five to seven days. In addition, they're more at risk as we look at where we are with COVID. So not only are we in a position that we can strongly recommend masks in line with all of the health agencies, we can strongly recommend masks, and there are huge benefits to our students who choose to wear masks in school. When we look at the specific language that it says here, and I'm not going to read this whole thing, but when all of the measures were not in place, quarantine is not necessary for students or adults who are not fully vaccinated if the person who was exposed was wearing a face mask. This is the instance of what we need to communicate to mom and dad, to every parent in our district. When you make a decision about sending your child to school with a mask, we know that the mask protects your child. When it comes to vaccinations, Dublin has among the highest vaccination rates in the county. I got new data today. In four, three, zero, one, six, and zero, one, seven, we're now over 80%. Those two ZIP codes make up 75% of our school district. I can't disaggregate the other 13 ZIP codes by school district. They'll give us the data for four, three, zero, two, six, but it's the data for all of Hilliard. So we don't know which one of those kids come to our school. But if we look at the majority of our school district, and I'm not saying we're at 80% as a district, but we're probably going to be in that ballpark. Our students, 70% in those two ZIP codes. Folks, we're following what we're being asked to do. We're getting vaccinated at high rates. There was something posted on social media today that Dublin is the epicenter for COVID and that things are going rampant. Actually, I got data today at 2:30 from Franklin County Public Health. In the last week, we have declined 50% in positive COVID cases in Dublin. Our two-week average was double what our average was for the last week. So we have to be careful what we're reading and what we're putting out there. Franklin County Public Health, and I get questioned about vaccination rates from national websites. They're lagging three or four weeks. So as we get the data, we get it live as of today. And this is data we're going to share with the school board at every school board meeting. When it comes to vaccinations, we're recommending as soon as you can get your vaccination, get that vaccination. This is in alignment with what the health agencies are saying. We are not requiring proof of vaccination from students or staff. I'll repeat that again. We are not requiring proof of vaccination from students or staff. So as we look at this, we're already talking about being a host for clinics when this is approved for five to 11-year-olds. We're already talking about being a host for clinics for our staff and for our students if a booster is recommended. We know, and we've been told by all of our health professionals, the only way out of this is through vaccinations. Now, folks, there's a big difference between the recommendations from our health officials and the orders. There is a federal order that you have to wear a mask on buses. I've had an individual in the community go back and forth with me on this. All I can tell you is that our legal counsel, OSBA's legal counsel, the National Organization Legal Counselors, say there's an order and they agree with the fact that this is an order on buses. So on our buses, whether it's to or from school, whether it's on a football trip on Friday night from Kaufman to Davidson, they're going to have to mask as of right now. We'll keep an eye on this and we'll let you know where this goes. It's the difference between the order and the recommendations. We can also tell you that we're going to continue the mitigation efforts that we did last year. And excuse me for being old and needing to put on my glasses. We will make sure that we have distancing to the greatest extent possible in all of our classrooms. Our teachers did this last year. We organized our classrooms to create as much space as possible in March, April, and May. We will do that again. In grades K through sixth, we're going to cohort students at lunch so that they're sitting around the same kids. Whether masks were mandated or not mandated, we got to eat lunch. And lunch is probably the time when we see the greatest risk. We're going to spread them out the best we can, but your child's going to be asked to sit with the same, in elementary schools, in sixth grade, they're going to be asked to sit with the same people every day. In the high schools, where we get incredibly tight in some of our cafeterias, we're going to open the gymnasiums for students who want to have that additional space. And for our high school kids, we're going to ask them to use common sense. If you're a flautist in Kaufman's marching band and that section are your friends and you're with them all the time, you're at each other's houses, you're at sectional practice, you're out on the field together, though that's your group, probably want to sit with them at lunch. Just like if you're on that offensive line at Jerome, you're in a huddle, you're in the locker room, you're together all the time, you minimize your risk if the people that you're with are the people that you're with. We also know the vast majority of our high school students have been vaccinated. So that's going to play into the conversation, but if students need to feel comfortable, need a little bit more space, our high school principals will allow that and we will create that additional space for them. All of our air filters are MERV 13 rated or higher. I don't know another district that can say that. Jeff Stark and our team have done a phenomenal job. And when we hear about air filtration and air movement, we are bringing in the maximum outside air. We have the highest possible filters on our systems. We are doing everything right in that area. Hand washing, hand sanitizing, sanitizers in classrooms and hallways will all be available. It worked for us last year. And enhanced daily cleaning will continue just like it did last year. We're asking parents, teachers, staff, everyone, if you don't feel well, don't come to school. You know, we used to send kids to school and say, "Power through." You didn't feel well today? Come on, tough it out. I got to go to work. We're asking moms, dads, parents, staff members, if you don't feel well, take that extra day, make sure you know what it is. If you have to grab one of the COVID tests, grab one of the COVID tests. We got them. We'll give them to you. So we just want to make sure that we're keeping each other safe. We're going to monitor and adjust this. As I said, this changed at two o'clock today. I've got staff Zooms with our faculty, two tomorrow, one on Wednesday morning. We've got a town hall on Wednesday night. It may change before Wednesday night. Health department officials update something, we've got to be nimble. We've got to be ready to change. We're very thankful. We can communicate with you all pretty quick. If I tell the right person, it's on both Facebook groups in a heartbeat. So we can get the information out. We're going to monitor our cases. We're going to monitor our quarantines. We're going to monitor our community spread. And we're going to continue to work with Franklin County Public Health and our health officials. Joe Mazzola and Mashika Roberts, whether I agree or disagree with them, I have the utmost respect for those folks. And yeah, they would like it if we issued a mask mandate that we were able to hold true to. But Joe Mazzola made it clear today, he's going to work with the Dublin City Schools, whatever our decision, in any way he can. He knows our community. He knows where we are, and we're going to continue to work with those health officials. If there are changes in this plan, we're going to let you know. We will respond to health orders really quickly. Folks, we're not going to hybrid. It's not available under the law. We're not going to remote. We can't. The things that allowed us to go to hybrid and remote learning as a district were in a bill designed for COVID that was temporary that expired at the end of June. We're not going back. We're going forward. If the change is one elementary has to mask up because there's something at that elementary, we can do that in a day. It doesn't involve any of you adjusting your schedules. It involves us responding to data. We can respond in a day with skill and quickly. So we've got to be able to work around and work together with changing conditions. There have been some who say, "Why don't you just have a mandate?" Y'all know, we live in a very divided community. A mask mandate would be a false sense of hope. Our current board policy lists the following exemptions for mask mandates. Individuals with health reasons. That would include mental health reasons. Individuals who are alone in a classroom, who work in a science lab, who have difficulty wearing a face covering is an exemption under the current policy. Individuals with communications or hearing impairments. When individuals are seated and actively consuming food and an established religious requirement that says that a face mask is not permitted. mask is not permitted. We would have thousands of exemptions filed. We'd have parents sending their students to school without masks. It's where we are as a community. We have the opportunity to do this together, and now we have the tools from the health department that says, "You mask your kid and send your kid to school, your child will stay safe, and your child can stay in school." We've got to find a way to come together around this. We've got to find a way, as a district that lost a year of planning, and it's not Dublin, we all did. I was the superintendent of the neighboring district. Last year, we spent the entire year talking about COVID. We didn't have our kids in school. We've got to come together on this plan, and we've got to get focused on providing our kids with an elite education each and every day. We have to identify where our individual students have gaps based on the last year. We've got to put our RTI and MTSS plans in place to close those gaps, and we need to get kids back on track as quickly as possible. Our mission to you is to provide an elite education to your children so they're prepared for whatever next for them. And that's got to be part of our focus, and that's got to be part of what we do. So in closing, I know not everybody's going to be satisfied. I know that there are people in this room who will say that we're cowardice for not standing up to the other part. But there's a political reality that, as the district leaders, we have to look at. And putting our teachers in a place where they're now mask police, I don't know what we're going to do next week for elementary walkthroughs. I wish I could tell you. But I do know if we say masks are required in our classrooms for elementary walkthroughs, our teachers are going to be face-to-face with people who don't wear masks to those elementary walkthroughs, who refuse. Are we really going to bring the police to elementary walkthroughs? That's not what builds a sense of community, when we know 80% are vaccinated and a mask protects the wearer. It's a personal responsibility. We trust our parents. So three things. Get vaccinated when you can, wear a mask, especially if you're not vaccinated, and we're going to get those protocols in place so that we can make sure we can keep as many kids in school as possible. So from a board perspective, one of the things I'm asking for later in a resolution is for you to affirm our return-to-school plans. And I'm not asking you to approve this plan. What I'm asking for is every board meeting while this is a topic, that this is when we have a discussion in front of our community. One of the things we've heard is, "Community wants transparent, open conversation." So this is when we have that transparent, open conversation. I will take your lead. Right now, the policy says that the final decision rests with the superintendent, but my final decision will rest where the five of you want me to have it rest. So right now, I'll answer any questions you have about our plan, what we know at this point, and where we are moving forward.
Can you contrast the new quarantine procedure versus the old one that was used?
In the old quarantine procedure, they said it had to be two barriers, and those two barriers was a masked individual and a masked individual. So really, the biggest change that we see, well, so for masks, that's the change. One barrier has been deemed enough by the Ohio Department of Health, confirmed today by Dr. Roberts. The other change is for vaccinated individuals, because when we were in school last year, our high school students, and really 12 and up, so it's really seventh through 12th grade students, they didn't have that opportunity to be vaccinated yet. So that vaccination is a game changer, and the change in protocol to one barrier. And Mr. Weineger, the other big thing is, last year, we were following a health department order. From March of 2020 through June 2nd of 2021, masking wasn't a discussion among individual school boards, because we were following a Department of Health and a Franklin County Public Health order, and that order is not in place at this time.
Just to go back to the quarantine discussion real quick, because there has been and continues to be, I think, some confusion on the part of the community as to whether or not we are setting up, and clearly you outlined, ODH sets up the guidelines we follow.
Yeah.
And I'm going to play the hypothetical, do we have the ability to not follow? And then what happens? Because I think that that's relevant for the community to know.
We had the conversation today with both health commissioners, because several districts have started and already have had lawsuits about quarantines. Franklin County Public Health has jurisdiction over the Dublin City Schools. Franklin County Public Health tells us when people are quarantined. We may communicate that to parents, because with the volume that the health department gets, we will communicate on their behalf, but the health department has the legal jurisdiction to quarantine, and that is who will be doing the quarantines. Now, one of the changes under Senate Bill 22 is, we will only quarantine with a medically diagnosed positive case, which means that we need a positive test that has been read by a health professional. So I know there was talk in some of the social media groups from folks who wanted masking, that they were going to call all their kids in as COVID positive to create a whole bunch of quarantines so that we would have to respond. We don't quarantine. Franklin County Public Health tells us who to quarantine, and the only time that happens is when Franklin County Public Health gets notification of a public, of a positive test from a doc. If you keep your child home with COVID-like symptoms, that will not trigger quarantine in classrooms. You have to go get a test, and you have to go see your doctor in order to trigger quarantines, and that's part of Senate Bill 22, and the health departments must follow that order.
Does that mean that we could not do the COVID testing here in our facilities?
The COVID tests that we provide our students are read by a third party, and you have to give the third party the results. And when we do that, that gets reported to the Department of Health. So even the antigen tests that we will provide, those get read by a public health provider, and then they notify the Ohio Department of Health, which in turn notifies our local health departments, and it all gets entered in, Mr. Harris. So yes, we can do tests here, and there is no test that we will provide that doesn't get read one way or another, reported one way or another to a public health provider.
Is it possible that we'll encounter any time delays?
It's very likely we will encounter time delays. And one of the things that our nurses and our team will be discussing in the next several days is, while we can't quarantine, we pride ourselves in open and honest communication. So as we've done in the past, if there is a likely case, you could get a call and say, "We're waiting on results, we just want you to know." And let parents know, but we can't mandate that quarantine, because the health department is who does that quarantine, and that direction will come from the health department to our nursing staff. Our nursing staff wants to be the ones to talk to parents. They take pride, you know them. If you're in an elementary school and you've been there for a while, you've got a relationship with those nurses. So we're thankful of the tremendous partnership we have with our health departments, and we are blessed to have amazing healthcare professionals in our buildings.
Thank you. So a hypothetical, if this were a classroom, and you know, we could have a class in here, and let's just say that you're the teacher, and we have a COVID-positive test, I'll just be patient X then, I'm COVID-positive, does, what happens here with everybody in the room? Either have to say that they're vax, or show proof, or provide vaccination records, or say, "I was wearing a mask"?
Well, it won't be say you were wearing a mask in a classroom. We'll know if you were wearing a mask, and if your seat is next to Mr. Melody, and Mr. Melody is wearing a mask right now, Mr. Melody would not be quarantined. If there, if you were sitting within three feet of Mr. Kern, and Mr. Kern was sitting across from you, Mr. Kern would quarantine, because Mr. Kern does not have a mask on.
So it's just...
It's proximity.
Proximity.
It's proximity, and this is what our nurses got really good at last year with the contact tracing. And I'll let all of you know right now, I wore a mask when I came in here. If I come interact with you, I'll wear a mask. I'm six feet away from all of you who I don't know, and I feel that you being able to hear me and see my face as I communicate with you is of value. So I took my mask off. We'll be having these conversations with our teachers. But yeah, so it's the people who are near you. We will have seating charts. Most teachers in our elementary already have seating charts. They just got their class list last week, and they're working on it. And when our nurses go into contact trace, they would say, "Stu was positive. Can you tell me who was around Stu within three to six feet for 15 minutes or more in class? Who did Stu sit with at choir, at lunch?" This is the process that we go through for every positive case. And then our nurses communicate with the health department, they advise us what we need to do, and we follow through with that. And we've got great experience in this. What we did last year in March, April, and May, Mr. Andres, we're ready for this. And Chris leads our nurses team and takes care of all that for us. So that's where we are.
I have one more question. Are any schools giving any consideration, or let me kind of pare that down, in central Ohio to saying masks in elementary and middle schools, no masks in high school, separating it because of the, that there is no vaccine currently in existence for certain younger age groups?
Yes, sir. Westerville, I believe, has gone, Westerville's K-12. Worthington is right now planning on K-8. I believe Gehanna is also K-8. I know that just through conversations, there are some schools who are still looking at their plan. Southwestern, I believe, sent a letter to their parents today that said that they will be masks recommended, and with the information from the new protocol. Olin Tangia is where we are right now as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
First of all, thank you, Dr. Marshausen, for trying to unite our very divided community that is a Herculean task, and I wish you all the best with that. But I, if anybody can do it, I have a feeling you can. So thank you. We have good people, and we have smart parents, and we can pivot as needed, and that's important. This summer, my family came this close to losing our six-year-old nephew, and he's not a statistic, he has a name, his name is Max. And Max used to love to play soccer. It was due to multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, and it is deadly, folks. There is no reason you would not want to put your kid in a mask. It is deadly, and he has heart damage, but he's, he lived, by the grace of God, he lived. And he was in ICU for quite a while. I have never seen anything so sad in my life. I don't know why we wouldn't protect, protect our children at all. So I feel comfortable with the plan, as it is today, and I know we will pivot as needed, and I have a lot of faith that we have really smart people here that love their children and love this community, and want to protect each other and protect themselves. So, thank you. I appreciate everything.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for the presentation tonight, and thank you for changing the direction and recommending that we have universal masking throughout the district and not just for vaccinated people. However, I do think that we should take another step and ask for universal masking as a requirement in our buildings. We have been elected leaders of this district. We've been elected leaders of this district, and being leaders requires us to make difficult and sometimes unpopular decisions. We need to lead by example and do the right thing to keep our students, staff, and community safe. And I would encourage us to adopt the policy to have universal masking required.
Just to jump in for members of the public, please refrain from making comments as members of the board or the administration are speaking tonight. I realize everybody is very passionate about this issue, but Mr. Melody has every right in the room to speak his mind, share his thoughts, and I don't think anybody should be intervening or interrupting him. Well, with that said, I think that the thoughts have been shared by members of the board. Is there anything that anybody else has to add at this time? I would like to echo, thank you, Dr. Marshausen. I think that we're going to continue to, just as we have over the past year or so, stay nimble and react to what we need to react to at the building level. I don't think that there's anybody amongst the five of us who doesn't share concern about COVID. I think that all five of us, as board members, take it seriously. Back in June, we were purposeful in our vote to give you the ability to be able to make decisions quickly and not tie it up to drawn-out board votes in order to allow us to move forward as a district. So we will have the resolution voted on here shortly, but before we go into that period, we do have public participation. Is there anything else that you'd like to add before that, Dr. Marshausen?
No, I'd like to thank the board for their discussion tonight, and I hope that we're able to have this level of discussion and this type of conversation at every meeting as we look at data, and continue to try to adapt and adjust as necessary to the work that we do.
So before we move on, I'd like to ask one follow-up question. As far as reporting, last year, we had the CATS dashboard.
Yes.
To be able to drill down to the building level and understand what's going on from a building-level standpoint?
I received assurance today from Dr. Hyder and from Lance Himes at the Department of Health that that MOU is, will be approved ASAP, was what we heard from ODH, to restart the CATS data, so we can share that with the board, and we can share with that information at our board meetings, so that we can get to that building-level data. And Mr. Melody, we do have the ability, and the conversation day with our health officials was that the health officials believe that they have the ability to issue a mask mandate at individual buildings, not just a broad mandate. So if we see anything at all that raises concerns, it doesn't necessarily have to be a district-wide decision, it could be a building decision, when we ask parents at a specific building, or we issue a mandate at a specific building, if there's something that's concerning there, sir.
And are we looking at any alternative plans as far as having like a masked classroom and an unmasked classroom, and be able to shuffle and have parent choice?
We've had those conversations at length, and when we build class lists, there are eight or nine different factors that go into that, some of which have federal programs tied with it in terms of IEPs, 504s, EL, and it would just be not possible to shift now to a masked room and an unmasked room and still make, ensure that we were meeting all of those requirements. So it's something that we took a deep look into and deemed that it was not something we could effectively do at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to public participation. There, in a standard board meeting, there's 30 minutes set forth for public participation. I'm going to read through the protocol ahead of time for issues on the agenda. We will have that now. It looks like we have a few people who have signed up, enlisted their topic as something that is not on the agenda, so that'll be addressed later on in the meeting. As we go through this list, I will go in order of folks who are signed up. We will have a timer going on our end. We'll try and give you at least 10 to 15 seconds of notice. I would ask that you please be respectful, knowing that we are trying to get through as many folks as we can this evening. As a board, we recognize the value of public comment and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. We are also committed to conducting our meetings in a productive and efficient manner that allows fair expression of comments. Our board policy sets forth the following rules. Public speakers are required to register in advance and are required to begin their statement by announcing their name, address, and group affiliation, if there is one. Each statement is limited to three minutes. Comments that are frivolous, repetitive, or harassing may be prohibited or stopped. Comments that are abusive, off-topic, or irrelevant will be prohibited. During public participation, each member of the public should direct their comments to the board as a whole. Consistent with our policy, this is not a time to question individual board members or district employees. If a public participant has a complaint regarding a particular employee, they should file a complaint with the superintendent to be shared with the board, and if applicable, we will invite that person to meet with the board in executive session to discuss their complaint. We will not permit public disparagement. We will not permit public disparagement of district employees and public comments. Lastly, I want to remind everyone that state and federal student privacy laws prevent the district from disclosing information related to any student, and you will not be permitted to discuss individual students during public participation. With that said, the first person signed up is Mr. Keith Barnes. Please come up to the podium here to the left.
Are we hooked up here? Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the group, the board, and parents representing whatever agenda you might have. My name is Keith Barnes. I'm not a politician. I'm not running for the school board. I'm a concerned grandparent. I'm retired. I have a total of six, eight grandchildren total, six living in the Dublin Schools, School District, five of which are in school. So I guess I could say I'm speaking on behalf of those, my grandchildren and children, because they've had very little voice or no voice in what's going on. But when the pandemic began, and my wife and I moved here after we both retired about five years ago to be closer to grandkids. But when it first began, the lack of knowledge about COVID-19 may have justified certain behaviors. However, it became well-known months after the virus, months ago, that the virus was less dangerous to children than the flu, and keeping schools open posed minimal risk to spreading infections. You can look at the statistical data through the CDC, and I looked at January 2020 through August of 2021. In the United States, we have about 328 million people. We had about 36,312 COVID cases. We had, unfortunately, 606,000-plus deaths. And I'm not diminishing what I'm saying next because I have grandchildren. Any loss is a sad loss. But the zero from 17 years of age nationwide, we're talking about 328 million people, is 349 nationwide. That's the total number of deaths in that age group. Now, while one is too many, at what point do we stop shutting schools down because we have one death, two deaths, 350 deaths in the United States that consist of 328 million people? That's the part I quite honestly don't get. The CDC data shows 93% of COVID deaths are ages 55 and older. I fall in that category. I got my shots. I did everything I was supposed to do. But .02% are, were younger than 25. That includes the schoolchildren. So CDC data also shows that Americans, regardless of age, are four more likely to die of something other than COVID-19. And I know that many of you know this. Number one cause of death within that age group is accidents. Number two, which should concern all of us.
Mr. Barnes, you got 10 seconds left.
For three minutes?
Yep.
No, that's not right. But 15, homicide is the number two, and number three is suicide. And a lot of that's because of substance abuse and overdoses within Ohio is 38.3 deaths per 100,000, 85.02 higher than the national average overdose. And Ohio represents 6.05 of nationwide overdose. So I guess as I look at things like, like that...
I'd have to ask you to wrap up your comments. I apologize, Mr. Barnes.
Which concerns the heck out of me is we're looking at substance abuse, homicide on the rise, and we're focusing on something that, we're not going to be shutting schools down every time there's a child's death. We can mourn it. I would mourn it, but we don't shut schools down. I had a lot more to say. The only thing I say is, is as parents and grandparents, we need to wake up. We need to get involved. We need to be informed. We need to have access. And things need to be transparent, and I appreciate the opportunity to do this.
Again, I'm not trying to be rude and interrupt, and this is, three minutes is typically what we do. It's set forth in our discussions. We say it all the time before public participation, so I don't mean any personal offense to cutting anybody off when we get to that point. Next up, Ms. Stryker.
My name is Sherri Stryker. I live at 5317 Terra Hill Drive in Dublin. I currently have twin boys who are going into their senior year at Kaufman High School. I'm a small business owner, and I have a stake in the Dublin community, and I want to ensure that all parents and members of the community feel like they have a voice within the Dublin City School Board. I care about our children and their futures and feel every decision made should benefit them. I'd like to first welcome Superintendent Dr. Marshhausen to Dublin, and thank you for your video message last week regarding our return to safety, our return to school safety protocols. I understand we're all just trying to navigate our way through this challenging time, and we're doing what is best for our families. I believe, regardless of what the Ohio Department of Health and Franklin County Public Health advise, which is simply a recommendation, not a law, that masking and vaccination is a personal family choice. They are looking to federal agencies such as the CDC and NIH for their recommendations. These agencies have given us a lot of reasons to question everything about this virus, from faulty PCR testings to don't wear masks, then wear masks, don't vaccinate young children, now all children should be vaccinated. Wear a mask even if you have been vaccinated. The science varies, and it seems to depend on who's paying for it. I do have concerns about the highly encouraged push to vaccinate our children, especially with so many cases of adverse reaction in children. I personally know a parent whose 14-year-old son was hospitalized after receiving his second dose of the vaccine and now has myocarditis. There have been over 3,000 cases reported so far. I also have concerns about treating kids differently based on vaccination status. It makes no sense to me that if a child has been exposed to the virus or tests positive after showing symptoms, can return to school with no quarantine time if they show proof of vaccination. But if a child doesn't have the vaccine, we're following the 10-day quarantine that the health department is recommending. How does this practice stop the spread if the vaccinated child still has COVID and is allowed back in the school? I just don't understand it. I do have some questions for the medical advisory board that the board is consulting with, and I'll send an email to request that information. Regardless of recommendations, mandates, or orders the Ohio Department of Health or Franklin County Public Health issue, we all have the right to peaceful noncompliance. It is my hope that the school board will decide to keep masks optional and up to the parent's discretion. If a parent decides they feel it's safer to mask their child, then they should do that.
This is your 10-second warning?
If that mask is protecting their child, then they shouldn't be concerned if my child is wearing one, vaccinated or not. Parents have the right to make that decision. No one else does. Thank you for your time to speak, and I look forward to meeting with each of you.
Mr. Paquita, I think that your topic will fall under issues not on the agenda, so I'm going to move forward with the next person that has signed up, Mr. Mike Boland.
My name is Mike Boland, and I live at 706A Greenland Place by Jerome High School. This year, my twins will both be in preschool, and my oldest will be in first grade. I would like to thank the Board of Education tonight for making masks optional for the 21-22 school year. I would also like to thank my kids' teachers last year for everything they had to deal with. They did an amazing job. Last year was my son's first year in kindergarten. He struggled emotionally due to the masks. Every morning, he asked my wife, "Do I have to wear this thing?" Every day he was picked up from school, he chucked the mask at the window because he couldn't stand wearing it for another second. There were a few days he had breakdowns where he just couldn't take it anymore. My wife and I decided that we were not going to deal with that this year. The masks are not worth the emotional and mental harm on our children. Decisions can never be based on one case. According to the COVID data compiled by the CDC, there were .2 deaths per 100,000 children between the ages of one and 14. To put this in perspective, for ages one to four, there were 2.8 deaths per 100,000 due to drowning. For ages five to 14, there was .5 deaths per 100,000 due to drowning. There is a better chance of drowning than dying of COVID. In the 1950s, taking X-rays of pregnant women was fairly common, was a fairly common practice. Dr. Alice Stewart discovered that children of mothers exposed to radiation from X-rays were more likely to have cancer as children. She was met with outrage from doctors at the time. 20 years later, by the 1970s, other scientists duplicated her findings and the practice ended. She was vindicated. Sometimes the tough and right decisions take years. Thank you to the Board of Education and Dr. Marshhausen for allowing my wife and I to make the health decisions for our children. I wish you the best, and God bless you and this country. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Brett Bowle.
I'm Brett Bowle, known as Ohio Brett, and I'm proud to be back in Dublin. I graduated in 1988, was captain of football, captain of basketball, student council president, and I've had a great personal relationship with every superintendent since then. My mom was an elementary school teacher at Indian Run. She had the honor of opening Dear Run. So I represent what Dublin was and what Dublin is now. I moved back here to have my children go to Dublin after playing football at the University of Toledo, and they both went through K-12 here, Dublin Jerome, class of 2020 and 2014. I just want to cry out against the abominations. I won't read from Ezekiel, Ezekiel 9, King James Version, in my first minute, but I would recommend all of our school board members to dig that out and see who cries out against the abominations in our midst. I am here to also share a truth that the CDC, Harvard studies, Stanford studies, you all are educated men and women on our board, and you know what the truth shares. You know that the masks don't work. You know that the particles are shown to come right through with this flu. The other truth is that we can celebrate, all life is precious. All life is precious. And we can celebrate that with this flu season, that 98% who got this COVID flu survived at an A-plus rating. So why are we not listening to the truth that you know is in your heart when you're making decisions? You know that's flawed. You know it in your heart that it, that is flawed. I'm not going to call out names. I'm not going to lose my composure. It's an honor to speak in front of the group, and I respect the opposing view, and I hope that they respect my view. I actually am the one who goes to all 88 counties in Ohio as Ohio Brett wherever I'm asked to help. I am a follower of Jesus Christ, so that's my truth. But to help, whether it's a disease of addiction, or if it's standing up for, for family members who want their voice heard, Ohio Brett is there to help. I learned those principles from my Dublin City school teachers who I love, my coaches that I love. We have a great school district, and you have a huge honor here. And I had an honor to meet our new superintendent in person, just briefly. He was gracious enough to take my, my welcome there. So I know you have a big task. You have a tough job. Stay grounded on the Word and seek the truth. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Mr. Eric Lichtenfield.
Thank you very much. My name's Eric Lichtenfeld. I live at 7789 Kelly Drive here in Dublin, 43016. And just to be clear, I'm tired of my kids having to wear masks. I don't want them in masks, but I can live with it. Because as much as I'm concerned about my kids' safety, I'm also concerned about your kids' safety, and your kids' safety, and the safety of our staff, and the safety of the family members, of everyone involved with our schools. I asked each of my 11-year-old twins separately, if you knew that you could spread COVID, but that you couldn't get sick from it yourself, would you wear a mask? And you know what they said? They didn't say yes. They said, "Of course," because they understand this is bigger than them. The situation has changed. The COVID we face now is not the COVID we faced of even a month or two ago. Now we have the Delta variant, which accounts for 93% of all new infections. And against Delta, the vaccines now appear to be significantly less effective at preventing infection and spread, although thankfully, still highly, highly effective at preventing hospitalization and death. Delta is also much more dangerous to children. At the end of July, the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics reported a surge in COVID cases among children and teens. Just a few weeks before that, we'd seen a dramatic jump in weekly pediatric cases. 39,000 pediatric cases in one week. The week that followed, 72,000. And as we've heard here already tonight, death is not the scenario that we need to be most afraid of. We're talking significant long-term health risks and damage. And we're talking about taking steps that are less protective than what we did before. I can understand folks who say, "My child, my choice." And I can imagine situations where I'd be saying the exact same thing, but this situation is different. Because with COVID and especially the Delta variant that's taken over, the practical effect of that position isn't just, "My child, my choice." It's your child, my choice. It's your family, my choice.
This is 10-second warning?
Our school staff, my choice. Their families, my choice. I'm tired, too. I want normalcy back, and I'm not a patient person either. Can ask my kids about that. But just because I want it now, that doesn't mean I get to have it now. And that's a lesson I'm sure we've all tried to teach our kids at one time or another. So why wouldn't we apply it here now when it matters the most?
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
The virus has changed. The situation has changed, and there is no shame in changing our response. No shame in saying, "When the situation was this, the right choice was X. Now that the situation is different, the right choice is Y." It's not shameful. It's honorable. Aren't we supposed to be preparing our kids for the jobs of the future? Jobs that will require flexibility...
I'm going to have to close your comments, please.
...and adaptability? Let us lead then by example. We like to say there's a Dublin difference. Don't let that be, that we differ from what the experts are telling us, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, and from the guidance we said we would follow. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll look at you and I'll tell you. Again, please respect the three-minute rule so that we can get through folks as much as possible here. Next up is Jennifer Mitchell.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Mitchell. My daughter, my oldest daughter will be a first grader at Depp this year, and I have a two-year-old also. I live in Jerome Village. I wrote my address on the, on the sign-in. Is that okay if I don't say my whole address? Okay. And I'm also a teacher in the district and a K-12 Dublin graduate. I'm here today to remind you that Dublin is home. I'm your former student, classmate, and staff member. Your daughter's teacher, your neighbor, and someone you once ate Lion Club pancakes with on St. Patrick's Day. Such an interconnected community should protect the most vulnerable and demonstrate... that we value all members, not just those with the loudest voices, deepest pockets, or most clout. I stand here today because I love Dublin City Schools. I thrived here as a student, adoring my incredible teachers, and soaking up the myriad opportunities to challenge myself. I'm proud to be a teacher here, and there was never any question where I wanted to raise my children. Before the Dublin Difference was ever a hashtag, I knew that it was real. And that's why my husband and I, like so many other families, are astonished and appalled that you are not requiring such a simple, proven measure to keep our young, unvaccinated children safe from a highly communicable disease and a pandemic. We moved here explicitly to give our children an exceptional, world-class education, and now we're afraid this decision is jeopardizing their health. I don't expect to change your opinions tonight, but that's part of the point. Our children's safety shouldn't be dependent on any of our opinions. After Sandy Hook and Parkland, Dublin did not declare that we trusted our community to not bring weapons into our schools. We did not put out a promo video urging everyone to do the right thing. No, we quickly mobilized to update security by redesigning all school entrances, establishing new procedures, and providing active shooter training to students and staff. None of this was voluntary. Families do not have a right to choose whether to follow these measures. But now, when surrounded by a ubiquitous, immediate safety threat instead of a potential one, enacting basic precautions is optional? It has been several days since the Franklin County Department of Health issued a mask advisory for everyone indoors and in crowded areas, regardless of vaccination status, following the latest CDC guidance for an area of substantial transmission like ours. It is extremely disheartening to see the number of adults in this room disregarding these recommendations, while the district insists that a recommendation is enough to keep our students safe. Clearly, a mask requirement is necessary. The people in this room are showing us why, right now. And even if the most adamant among them insisted on filing exemptions, those who are less determined would not bother. You know what the expert guidance says. You know that every concerned family cannot just switch to DCS virtual now. You know the social division sure to arise from optional masking would impact learning and mental health significantly.
This is your 10-second warning?
We expect better from Dublin City Schools. Dr. Marshhausen stated that the Dublin Difference is doing the right thing in a crisis. Our children are waiting for you to do just that. Dublin is home for all of us, and all of our children deserve to safely access a world-class education in person. I believed for so many years that the Dublin Difference was real. Is it? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dr. Julie Heck. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Sorry. Were you able to hear me before? Okay. I'm a biologist. I'm a lecturer at Otterbyne University, and I have one daughter in the, excuse me, at Davis Middle School, and another daughter in a school outside of the district. I have two things to say tonight. First, my younger daughter attends a nearby school. She's the one not in the district. That school was in-person all of last year except for two weeks, and they made it through the year with zero COVID cases. I think that bears repeating. A school made it through the entire year, nearly entirely in-person, with zero cases of COVID, among students and staff. In contrast, Dublin schools had over 1,000 cases in the past, as of, I believe, August, early August, among students and staff. Excuse me. I had to scribble these down quickly earlier today. So if there really is one goal, why don't we follow the, the practical example of another school that so successfully kept their kids safely in school? I could speak at length about how that, that was achieved, zero cases, as I'm now on that school's board of directors. It's a much smaller school, but I think it's still an impressive accomplishment. But really, it boiled down to a couple of things. All of the community, community members of that school cared about each other and about following, and even going above and beyond the science-based health and safety recommendations. So this, in the next couple of weeks, I have sort of a tale of two schools going on here. I've got one kid, I'm going to send her off to school, really excited, happy, hopeful for another safe school year like last year. Going to send off my eighth grader, worried, fearful, and really concerned for this community and what's, what's going to happen with this Delta variant that is spreading across the country very rapidly. And maybe, I didn't state the obvious, but they, they masked fully, and they will mask fully again this year. That was a big part of, of how they achieved zero COVID cases.
Ms. Heck, this is your 10-second warning?
All right, so I'll keep the second part short. It's really, that was my main point. I just wanted to point out this, the tweet from this morning where our superintendent spoke with 160 new teachers, and this picture shows about 40 of them. Only two are masked, and I look around this room, also unmasked, and again, it just simply goes against the Franklin County Public Health Advisory that regardless of vaccination status, we all ought to be masked indoors. So that does not give me hope for this school year. Please mandate mask-wearing. It's just the, the safe thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. That's about what I figured. Next up, Mr. Alex Joseph. Ms. Alex Joseph, I apologize, ma'am.
My name is Alexandra Joseph. I am the mother of three Dublin students. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. In March of 2020, the Friday of the premature COVID spring break, my son came home, unbeknownst to us, infected with the SARS-CoV-2 Alpha variant. He ran high fevers for 10 days and required steroids to be able to climb the stairs to his bedroom without stopping to cough every two steps. Just when we thought he had recovered, the fun started. His toes blistered, his feet and hands looked as purple, as if they had been dipped in Concord grape juice. He would experience unexplained shortness of breath, and he had bouts of hard, rapid, irregular heartbeats that you could feel across the couch pillow next to him. In late May, his doctors eventually diagnosed him with COVID multi-system inflammatory syndrome. This is when a person's immune system has been hyperactivated by the COVID virus and begins to attack its own blood vessels and heart. His Nationwide Children's Hospital COVID cardiology specialists have stated that his COVID hands and toes were the worst they had ever seen. These symptoms, and worse, lasted through late December 2020. That is nine months of COVID. My son went from being an athlete, healthy, playing lacrosse and running cross-country, to being forced to shut himself indoors because no one knew what would happen if he became infected with COVID for a second time. Fast forward to a year and a half. Thankfully, science prevailed. My son is vaccinated, and after missing his freshman year of high school, he is more than ready to return to his friends, his community, and to in-person school. No other child should have to experience what my son did. As terrifying as our ordeal was, we didn't understand how close to death he came until he had overcome most of his symptoms. There are children at Nationwide with the same diagnosis that have had to have their hearts reconstructed. The Delta variant is three times more contagious than the variant my son was infected with, and far more harmful to the younger demographics. Previous statistics no longer apply. Cases are surging all over the state, country, and world. While Delaware County, per the CDC today, states that above 12-years-old represent 75% vaccination, the 12-year-olds and under still represent 0%. There is no vaccine.
Ma'am, this is your 10-second warning?
It is your elected responsibility to prepare, not only for our children's education, but also for their safety. As we teach them critical thinking, I implore you to listen to science and to not make this a political issue. Please mandate masks to protect the children, and please ensure that the teachers are protected through vaccination and masking. Please continue to follow CDC, AMA, FCPH, AAP, and Nationwide Children's Recommendations. Do not expose further children to our experience or worse. Please vote no on item 5C. Thank you so much.
All right, this will be the last speaker this evening. For those who have signed up, who do not, are, will not have a chance to speak, please feel free to stick around at the end if you'd like to talk with a member of the board or the administration, or please contact us by email if you have not already. Our last speaker-
Can our statements be posted to the record?
You can provide statements to Mr. Kern, who is our treasurer, and he will make sure that they're accounted for in the minutes. So yes, probably the best way to do that is email Mr. Kern. Is there a way for us to put that up somehow? Or Doug, can you make sure? Mr. Baker has his hand raised. If you want to get with Mr. Baker, he'll make sure he gets you the email from Mr. Kern so that it's accounted for in the minutes. Welcome. Last speaker for this evening is Ms. Jen Weber.
To the board and the superintendent, thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. I, I come to this meeting, first of all, my name is Jennifer Weber. I live at 4039 Killery Drive in Dublin, Ohio, 43016, where we are 80% vaccinated. I come bearing a letter that was signed by 364 members of our community. I will try to read it as fast as I can so I can comment under the, the three minutes. On July 23rd, a group of concerned caregivers, students, and Dublin citizens sent this letter to the board. I'm not going to read the entire letter to you, as so much has changed in just a few short weeks, but I will leave it for you to read again as you wish. It is now signed by 364 members of our community, including several students. In it, we ask for the following. At minimum, masking and three fadivistance of all students and staff in grades K through six when indoors until those students can be fully vaccinated. Masking of middle school and high school students and staff when indoors until we have confirmation that the majority of Dublin students aged 12 to 18 have been fully vaccinated. Since then, the CDC has updated its guidance to match the AAP and calls for universal masking in schools, all teachers, all staff, regardless of vaccination status. In addition, the Franklin County Board of Health and Ohio Department of Health are strongly recommending masking in grades K through 12, and have issued a mask advisory for all of Franklin County regardless of vaccine status. This sentiment is echoed by Governor Dewine and officials at both Cincinnati Children's Hospital and Nationwide Children's Hospital here in Columbus. The only reason they haven't issued a mandate is because Senate Bill 22 essentially won't allow it. On Wednesday, August 4th, our COVID cases in Ohio topped 2,000 for the first time since February. Our cases had dropped all the way to 200 cases back on July 2nd. This shows how quickly COVID is again spreading through our communities. The percent positivity rate has been above six for the past week, and as of today, sits at 8%. We could continue to go over these numbers, dive into what they mean, but most of us aren't medical doctors, and even fewer of us, fewer of us are epidemiologists, infectious disease experts, or public health experts. Fortunately, we have people that do work in those fields to guide us, and all of them are recommending universal masking in schools. At some point, we have to admit that no matter how much we Google, we are not the experts, and that we need to listen to the experts. We learned that the Dublin City Schools Advisory Board unanimously agreed that masks will help keep kids in school. A year ago, we sat in here in a meeting just like this-
This is your 10-second warning?
And one goal was heard over and over again, was kids in school. The masks worked last year. And I'll skip to the end. And so we urge you, if your goal really is and always has been kids in school, then let's do the very thing that we, that will allow that. Let's show our kids that during hard times, we can do hard things together as a united group, and that it is a district, we will overcome this challenge. We will prevail. I am highly recommending that you pass universal masking for everyone in school. Thank you.
All right, moving on to Board Presidents, Board of Education comments, reporting out from anything committee-related from over the summer. I know that it's been relatively slow. We had a BAC meeting. I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to share out of that, Scott?
I'd say we, we did have a, I'll say, a special BAC meeting earlier. They almost don't, don't start until September, but we had one last week in August. The group met at the new middle school, Eversole Run. We had a great tour of that building. The building looks fantastic. I'm looking forward to getting it opened here next week, two weeks from now.
Anything else for members of the board? All right. Moving on to reports and action items from the superintendent's office. Dr. Marshhausen?
One of the things that I shared with the Board of Education was, at the meeting in which I was hired, I presented a 100-day plan. And part of that 100-day plan was to report back to you on my 100th day, which was yesterday, since we started on where we are. And I would like to share some reflections on that plan. All of the items that I committed to do were accomplished as part of the 100-day plan. And there were four goals, and as it's been a lengthy meeting, I will move through these fairly quickly. Goal one was to work with you as a school board, with our treasurer, Mr. Kern, and our governance team, to make sure that we were on the same page, the expectations were clear. And I am pleased that I've been able to meet on a regular basis with all of the school board members. Summer's been a bit of a challenge, as people have been traveling, and getting together's been a little bit more difficult. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to get back into a regular cadence with monthly meetings to discuss topics that are pertinent to the district. I also think it's important that the superintendent, treasurer, and school board members have opportunities to get to know each other as people, as leaders, because when we get in times of crisis such as this, knowing who we are, what we believe, even when we may disagree, is really important. I'm pleased with the agenda review process and how we make the agendas for the folks and the public who don't know. The week before, the president, vice president, treasurer, and superintendent sit down and go over the agenda and talk about what do we want, what's the order, how do we want to make it so that we are able to best serve our community? I believe that our weekly communications with the board have proven valuable to the board, and during the midst of this crisis, I hope that, I, I've apologized sometimes for over-communicating with you, but I hope that you have found those communications and part of our govern, governance team valuable. And then finally, in terms of effective governance, our mini-retreat was productive. I think that we had a great conversation with Mr. Tim Kite. He came to our admin team meeting this past week as we look at bringing some alignment and intentional culture work to our community. So in terms of goal one, I think that the history that this board has of interaction with its administration, of working together, and the longevity that this board has provided the community, I feel blessed to be able to come into such an established process that has worked so well. When we talk about establishing public trust and confidence, one of the things that I hope our community will see, that even in tough times like tonight, we're going to be open, we're going to be honest, and we're going to have conversations about how we got here and where we are. This isn't easy stuff. And one of the things that I've heard during the conversations I've had with different groups is there's a need or desire for more transparency. And I think it's difficult in a time with electronic communications, with the speed that everything happens. We used to be able to govern between board meetings, and when we came here, that's when things were known. Well, in today's day and age, things happen really quick, and how we communicate has to change. I think that our, my opportunity and- in May, June, and July, a lot of these meetings were before the uptick again in COVID, before this became such a heightened issue on our radar. And in talking with business leaders, getting to serve as a ex-official member of the Chamber of Commerce, the Dublin Foundation, meeting with members of council, actively engaging with our partners at the Welcome Warehouse in Dublin Bridges, in the Food Pantry, these relationships are awesome, and the resources are here, and everything is here for this community to continue to get better every day as a school district. And I'm excited to do that. Area for improvement is how do we communicate in times when they're difficult, and how do we have conversations when we don't always agree, and we're not always going to agree. So I will continue to work on that. As Mrs. May said, it's going to be a monumental challenge, but that's what we do, is we overcome challenges and we work together. And I'm undeterred by some of the comments and passionate about the fact that we can come together as a Dublin community. The third goal I talked about, when I put my 100-day plan together, was to study the current DEI efforts in our district and look at and review the programs, goals, and reports of the district. We have a really strong policy process that allows us to update Board policies, allows us to work together. And there are really two main boards, two main jobs of a school board. Hire the Superintendent and Treasurer and set Board policy. And we've got a great policy practice here, and we want to keep doing that. I'm eager to get back to setting specific academic goals, and eager to get our focus on academics, and eager to create strategic visions that allow us to move forward. It's been a long time since we haven't had a strategic vision in Dublin, and look forward over the next several years to doing that. When we look at our time in the, in our words in the DEI space, we need common vocabulary so we're all on the same page. I've asked an awful lot of people, if you look at any of our signs, it's trademarked, the Dublin City Schools, committed to excellence and equity. When I ask for a definition of equity, if I ask 25 people, I'm going to get 25 different answers. We're going to be all over the place. So when we talk about equity, and when we talk about wanting every student to be valued and welcomed in our classrooms, we have to understand what that means. And before we have the conversations about the what, we have to be on the same page when it comes to vocabulary. Dr. Denise Hamilton is a rock star. We hit the jackpot when we hired Denise to be our director in this area. Her focus on bringing people together and what brings us together is exceptional, and I look forward to our community getting to hear and work with Denise. We've got to have a vision for where we want to be, and we have to have a unity in our, unity in our community about what we want in the area of this space. And we're going to do this as we work together. And then finally, we want to build upon our existing support structures to build the climate and culture we need in the Dublin City Schools. We have an amazing partnership with our friends at DEA and DSA. Working with Donna and Cheryl is great. I've been asked about our back-to-school plan and have the teachers been included. We've talked throughout the summer. We've talked with our support folks throughout the summer, and continuing to build that trust is required as we work together. I've said over and over, the magic happens in the classrooms. I don't teach a single kid. On the 18th, we'll have about 1,300 teachers who make magic happen, and that will happen in our classrooms. Our PTO organizations, our boost organizations, our support organizations are awesome. Getting to speak with our PTO presidents, with Park, with all the different groups, it's all here, and we've got to continue to build that climate and that culture together. We have built an incredible administrative team. Having come in with the departures of folks like Dr. Deagle, and Jill Reinhardt, and Gail Marsh, we've been able to put together an elite team of administrators who are really skilled that will help move us forward in another direction. And I come back to, we have to talk more about our process. We need to actively use technology to engage our parents, to engage our community, and work together. So as I reflect back on May 1st to today, I am humbled to have the opportunity to be your Superintendent. I am committed to move this district forward and to work with folks who don't always agree. As you will learn, I'm a guy who doesn't hold grudges, and I talk an awful lot. So when I'm in front of different groups, you're going to hear me talk from my heart, to be authentic, and to work together as we take Dublin to that next level. So, members of the Board, I will post this presentation, and as we have the opportunity to meet in the coming months, I look forward to talking to you about these goals and working together to create that shared vision, culture, and common vocabulary. So thank you for the opportunity and look forward to moving ahead.
Any comments from members of the Board?
Yes, I have a comment. Can you hear me? Thank you. I remember during the interview process, the Board asked you, what will you do in your first 100 days? And oh my gosh, you've been very busy. So thank you for all of this and looking forward to the rest. Thanks.
All right, moving on to item 5C. It's recommended by the Superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the attached resolution affirming the district's return to school plan. The Board of Education affirms the district's return to school plan. The Board directs the Superintendent to provide updated data and reports as a presentation and Board discussion at each meeting through the remainder of the calendar year. Is there a motion? Moved by Mrs. May, second by Mr. Harris. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Well, I have a quick comment. This does give the Superintendent the authority to be able to pivot and change things as needed, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
No.
Mr. Weiniger?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes four to one. Moving on to Treasurer's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. Just a few things to update the Board on. As you know, I've talked about it several times, the state budget, the Fair School Funding Plan was passed, has come out through the Funding Formula for districts in the state of Ohio. While the plan was developed with Treasurers and Superintendents across the state, it did have a six-year phase-in, and is only committed by the legislature for the first two years. So anyways, as different webinars and different things have been going on and learning more about it, I think the biggest thing is, I know people want exactly, what are we getting? What are we getting? You know, and as we're so dependent on our local taxpayers and being accountable to them, we will, you know, continue to monitor the situation. But ODE is really having to delve through the language of the Funding Formula, and we'll have some exact simulations based off of data as probably as a rule into October, which is just in time for our November five-year forecast update. So we'll be good at that point. Just other things going on, our, you know, I talk about accountability. Our audit is underway, our annual audit by our Otter. So we look forward again to hopefully get the Otter of States Award, which is no comments, no material deficiencies or anything like that. There again, I talked about accountability to our taxpayers out there. So as far as agenda items this evening, the appropriation changes for a grant that was received, so we could spend that. The transfer, and I forgot to mention this in my Board update, is the methodology on this is actually Dr. Deagle, and as far as one of the last things she worked on was worked with our office on a methodology on just trying to fund the Eversole Run principles fund, kind of took a look at how redistricting went and some of the student movement. So you'll notice on here, CAR is not included, as CAR didn't really, their enrollment really didn't change through the process. So as other buildings, as opening Eversole Run, other buildings lost some enrollment in the shift throughout the district, community district, and it's kind of how the methodology went. And then so, with the goal of being $10,000, so being transferred. So that's that methodology. And then we have one more, as far as you know, our summer rental program of our baseball fields and the maintenance of those. We had one person who worked over at Scioto who hadn't previously been approved. Other than that, that is it.
Questions or comments for Mr. Kern, for members of the Board?
Brian, I want to thank you for the work you did with the Ohio Fair School Funding. I appreciate that, as we were setting up Zooms with all the Superintendent, Treasurers, and Board members in Senate District 16.
Well, thank you. You took a lead, too, to help out on the Board member side and trying to get support for this. Like I said, this is a long haul and a process, and we have to see through it, two more budgets in that timeframe. So it's continued a work that needs to be done.
Rick, did you have something? Okay. It's recommended by the Treasurer, the Board of Education, approve item 6B, 6C, and 6D. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Weiniger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Melody. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Reports from the Department of Academics and Student Learning.
Good evening, members of the Board. Can you hear me? Okay. I just have a quick item for you tonight, and that is the approval of our team physicians. This team is led by Dr. Whitehead, the head sports medicine physician for our district. We also appreciate Dr. Hospital, Dr., I want to say this right, Peter Paulo, and Dr. Lafferty, who's new to our team. Dr. Lafferty has served as the team physician for Westland High School and is now going to be serving as the team physician for Scioto High School. She's Board certified in family medicine and fellowship-trained in sports medicine and believes and works hard to help get those athletes competitive and safe and injury-free. So a group of excellent physicians here that help keep our athletes safe and competitive. That's all for tonight.
All right, moving on to, it's recommended by the Superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the district physicians for the 21-22 school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. May, second by Mr. Harris. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weiniger?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Reports from the Department of Operations, Mr. Stark.
Good evening, members of the Board. Tonight, we only have one item, and it's recommended by our Superintendent, the Board of Education, approve a resolution to receive cooperative bids from Meta Solution for the purchase of school buses. As you know, operations, our goal has been to turn our entire bus fleet every 10 to 12 years. We're proud of the fact now that 50% of our entire fleet is from 2016 on. By approving this resolution tonight to take part in this cooperative bidding process, allow the district best-in-class pricing across different manufacturers of buses. There is no commitment to purchase, it's just will give us access to the pricing. Funding for our buses, as you know, come from our improvement, improvement dollars, and with approval of this Meta Cooperative, we would plan on coming back to the Board later this year with a recommendation for purchase. If there's any questions.
Any follow-up to that, Mr. Stark? All right. It's recommended by the Superintendent, the Board of Education, approve the attached resolution to receive cooperative bids as needed with Meta Solutions for new bus purchases. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. May, second by Mr. Weiniger. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. May?
Yes.
Mr. Weiniger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
And Mr. Valentine.
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Reports from the Department of Human Resources.
Good evening, members of the Board. On the agenda for your approval, there are two administrative job descriptions for your review and approval, and then movement of two staff members from the Treasurer's Department into these positions under the salary change section. There's an assistant principal resignation that happened right after our last Board meeting, and then an internal replacement to fill that vacancy. And then since our last Board meeting, we've had five certified resignations and nine certified hires. There's a list of salary changes for 10 certified staff members, and then we have a handful of certified substitutes who will provide support to the student support services area, provide related services to students. There's a list of three teachers who will be teaching six periods per day for your approval. And then we have a few miscellaneous items on the agenda for approval. A home instruction tutor, teacher teaching summer school in the special ed area, and a leave of absence request for one of our teachers who will be an administrative intern at Eli Penny Elementary. There's an attachment requesting extended time for certified staff members who are working and providing services to students that extend beyond the regular number of teacher workdays. And then in the certified area of the agenda, you will see a list of supplemental contracts for the 21-22 school year. These cover fall sports, year-long academic clubs, department chairs, positions, arts testing, and oversight of student leadership groups. Moving on to the classified agenda, we have 16 resignations and three retirements on this agenda. We want to thank and congratulate Cheryl Burns, Scioto High School Treasurer, for her nine years with Dublin City Schools, Kimberly Cook, Griselle Middle School Cook cashier, for 17 years with Dublin City Schools, and then Sue Sastarstick, current early childhood center paraprofessional for her 22 years with our district. In addition, we're welcoming 37 new hires in our classified ranks to Dublin City Schools. There are 10 salary changes on due to staff members transferring into other DCS positions. And then lastly, under the stipends section, you'll see 11 different stipends. These range from activities to help us get the school year started, to providing payment for being in content lead, ensuring our schools are safe, and being a nursing lead. Are there any questions at all in the Human Resources section?
Just a quick question regarding mitigation strategies and personnel related to that. And I don't know if Brian maybe wants to comment on the financing of it, and you want to comment on where we have people, because I know last year, we used a lot of extra people to help manage pods of kids, to help manage with lunch periods and such. Could you, or anyone that wants to comment on that, keep us informed about what's going on there with extra personnel?
You know, one thing that comes to mind are additional contact tracers. So that would be one. We're working with Brian to make sure that we have additional subs in our subpool in case we have teachers that are out. We're fortunate, we've replaced a lot of our clinic aides, and they're trained, and so they're ready to go in terms of contact tracing as well. But overall, I feel like it's a different year, but staffing-wise for mitigation, I feel like we're in a really good place with the staff that we've hired. You know, what do we have, 168 new staff members and new teacher orientation just today? So I think we're ready to go, Rick.
And we are also in a really good place, thanks to Jeff and his team, with masks. We have a nice supply on hand with cleaning supplies, with everything that we need. Last year at this time, districts were really struggling to try to get their hands on the products, and we've got it stockpiled pretty good. So thanks to Mr. Stark and his team that we're ready to go.
As far as the funding mechanism, we've used Esser Funds. As you know, there's been over three rounds of Esser Funds, so we'll continue to use those for those PPE and other mitigation stuff. But I think some of the nice things is, is we get back to normal education, as Dr. Marshausen mentioned, fill the gaps. We'd also be able to hire either through staff or purchase service from different businesses, is like mental health support and different other remediations that we can help our students on there, too. So we're trying to get back to normal as best we can, but also if whatever mitigation stuff we need to do, we'll utilize those Esser Funds. The third wave we have to, will have available to us through 2024, so. Great, thank you. That's exactly what I wanted.
There being no additional comments, it's recommended by the Superintendent, the Board of Education, approve items 12A, 12B, and 12C. Is there a motion? Moved by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weiniger. Call the roll, please. Call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mrs. May? And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Reports from the Office of Public Information.
Good evening, everyone. Um, as you may have guessed, back-to-school communication is our highest priority right now. Registration gateway is open, so we encourage everyone to do their required back-to-school forms. Today's secondary schedules were posted in Facebook. Uh, and elementary teacher assignments were emailed out to parents. So, um, we're getting closer to the start of school. And of course, our safety protocols have been posted up there as well. Medical forms, final forms, um, those types of things that have to be taken care of. We continue to put those on social as we go as well. We'll have bus routes ready to go later this week and we'll get those posted on social when those are ready. And just one note for everybody and thank you for your patience as you go through the process of easy pay is now pay schools. And so we appreciate folks taking the time to set up a new account with pay schools and your, your dollars will transfer for your students' lunches. We have, and Eric, if you want to put that up there, um, that would be great. We have built a new who to contact page, we call it, which is an effort to direct our folks. We've listed some of the more, um, common questions we get at Emerald Campus. And if we can direct people to the right people to call so they get the most complete and timely answer, we think this can be helpful for us. There's a lot of questions that come to this building that really belong at the, at the school building level. And there are some questions at the building level that really belong at this level. And we're going to try to help people through this webpage and through some social media education efforts, get them to the right place a little quicker, um, so that they can get the detail they're looking for and not have to call two or three people around the district, right? That's always frustrating from a customer service standpoint. If well, I called here and I got a different answer than I called here. So, uh, that's part of our efforts there. Next Monday, we'll, it'll be top and center of our first email of the 21, 22 school year. We'll start that on Monday. And I am proud to say we have a new email template coming for all of our schools and for the district using a product called Smore. So look for that, uh, this coming Monday. Thank you.
Items for board discussion or future agenda items? All right, public participa- participation for issues not on the agenda. Unless there is something different and I'll ask at the tail end. From the list, we've got two folks, uh, who have signed up, uh, for public particip- public participation for issues not on the agenda. First, Mr. Mark Pukita. As a reminder, it will be, uh, three minutes, just like we previously did. In addition, I know that you had gone around the room and, uh, introduced yourself to members of the board and the administration. This is an opportunity for, um, you to present or, uh, share information with the board. Uh, it's not a, uh, situation where we engage in dialogue at this time. If there's questions that you have, that can be done, um, at a later time.
Sorry about that. My name is Mark Pukita. I am a Dublin resident. I had a daughter who went to Dublin Schools graduated in 2008. She was in the first class at Bailey and then went to Griselle and ended up at Kaufman. Great education. And she's doing well and has gifted me with two awesome grandsons. What I left for the board members this morning was some, or this after, or this evening, something that I sent them two weeks ago by email and I haven't had a response from any of them. It's called the contract with the district. I think that many of us with COVID, with the, uh, last election, have really seen, uh, how government at all levels is either corrupted or is in a situation where we have insiders and outsiders. And we started getting involved and we want more information and more transparency. A word I've heard a couple of times. And, uh, to use one of the words that the new superintendent uses quite a bit, I think we've now become elite citizens looking for that information. So this contract has 11 points. It used to have 10 points on it. We thought we were done with masks, but they're back. And what we're asking is that every board member and every candidate for board membership signs this, uh, contract with the district. Now, there's two forms of it. On one side is a, just 11 items and you can sign it if you agree with all of them. And then on the other side, it's à la carte. You can check what items you agree with and don't agree with. And I would contend that if board members and candidates won't complete this, you pretty much get an answer on how transparent and how honest they are. So it was two weeks ago, I sent out emails and I haven't had a single response from the five board members here. This is basically my chart. Now, I would ask you if any of you would like to help fill in this chart here tonight? Would any of you like to participate in that?
Sir, I outlined at the front end of you speaking.
Yeah, okay, so that's the way it goes. I want you to know that the Ohio School Board Association, when new members come on board and they get initiated and go through training, they tell them not to answer questions like this. The other thing they do is tell them to always vote together as much as they can. Now, that to me sounds Marxist, socialist, communist. So I just thought I would bring that to your attention. I will continue to look for answers to my survey because I'm a voter. Which of you are up for reelection in the fall?
A- as I said earlier, this is a time for you to present information.
We can't even get an answer on that?
That's available. There's other people who are going to speak after you. I'm trying to be respectful and I told you at the front end as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. You see how it works.
The next person up is Mr. Jeff Hartley.
Hi there, Jeff Hartley, Two Notch Court. A bit more on the theme of transparency, actually, some comments based on the 100 Days slide presentation. There are a few points here where I think just a lot of clarification will help this whole theme of transparency and perhaps the, the board and future communications can elaborate on this or annotate the deck. There's mentions of nonprofits, but not who those are. Organizations and partners, but no mention of who those are. It was noteworthy that achievement goals were listed separately from academics. I mean, that could just be semantics, but that's the kind of thing that we need some clarification on. Common vocabulary in the DEI space. Again, we're not looking for word salad so much as very clear definitions of what those goals and objectives are and that sort of thing. There's, there's a lot of baggage with the term equity, obviously. It's on, it's trademarked on the sign now, so we're stuck with it. A lot of us, particularly in this region, grew up under the notions of equality in that global, uh, melee going on between equity and inequality camps. That's obviously going to carry over here. And I know you've spoken to a bit of that publicly. The more you can elaborate, the more you can annotate, right? The, the better off that messaging is going to be, the better off we'll be able to avoid those melees here in Dublin. A lot of us grew up blue collar and, you know, we, we were the guys getting second place to Dublin in various competitions. So we came here, you know, knowing that this was the beacon of academic excellence. So that persistent focus on academic excellence, that's why we're here, right? A lot of this other stuff is noise. We get dragged into the global melee just with the wrong word being used or something not being elaborated enough on a deck like that, so. Identify district goals and vision, transparency on the exact same page. I could not agree more. So that's really the ask. It's, it's technical in nature, but let's not get bogged down in word boggle or word salad or things like that. Thanks.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Mr. Harris, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Melody? Call the roll, please.
Uh, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Melody?
Yes.
Mr. Weininger?
Yes.
Mrs. May? And Mr. Valentine?
Yes, motion passes five to zero, we are adjourned.